The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame I moved on by my own will, I had nothing else I wanted to do Was it hard, but I didn't hate it, I did not even like it I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I, it's my stress that's for sure I never wanted to run away, I was very motivated Then what is this feeling? Who would I ask? I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I Taste like vegetables I don't like The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame I'm not waiting for Santa Claus I already have the gift, just can't hold it in the box I know all about it, no one can solve it Unless I just had to do something about it It's not even a case I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I I hate the alarm clock I chose The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame My patience, my body is light, let's take the gray haze into sky blue I know who you are, I'm not leaving you again The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar There is nowhere to go back and nowhere to go, it's all illusion though Me without me, I'm the one to blame Take my home, the place where I belong No matter what changes, no longer change me No matter what, no longer change me I can feel the light even after the sun goes down The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame I moved on by my own will, I had nothing else I wanted to do Was it hard, but I didn't hate it, I did not even like it I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I, it's my stress that's for sure I never wanted to run away, I was very motivated Then what is this feeling? Who would I ask? I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I Taste like vegetables I don't like The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame I'm not waiting for Santa Claus I already have the gift, just can't hold it in the box I know all about it, no one can solve it Unless I just had to do something about it It's not even a case I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I I hate the alarm clock I chose The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame My patience, my body is light, let's take the gray haze into sky blue I know who you are, I'm not leaving you again The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar There is nowhere to go back and nowhere to go, it's all illusion though Me without me, I'm the one to blame Take my home, the place where I belong No matter what changes, no longer change me No matter what, no longer change me I can feel the light even after the sun goes down The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid something will change Me without me, I'm the one to blame I moved on by my own will, I had nothing else I wanted to do Was it hard, but I didn't hate it, I did not even like it I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I, it's my stress that's for sure I never wanted to run away, I was very motivated Then what is this feeling? Who would I ask? I've been patient, but it was bearable, I've had the gray haze for a long time though I never found out what it was I Taste like vegetables I don't like The town inside me and everyone's voice Only I'm not there, just watching from afar I can't go home because I'm afraid
Well, hello! What do we think of the new shit, huh? Hello detective, yes, new starting soon screen And new alerts and stuff, yeah! Uh, it's by Freya Amari, uh, which I credited in my Twitch panels, but hello! It, I'm so happy, I'm on a new PC, this feels kinda surreal So, hold on mate, let's see, okay, so I do wanna show off the new alerts Cause I'm actually pretty proud of them and they're more, um... There are more things that I have now, so, here, so now we have... We have these Yeah! I got the uh, Hi-Fi Rush sound effects for these, so I'm, I'm very happy Uh, and then here's the sub Yeah! And a cheer, oh no wait, hold on, I'm waiting for it to go And then I like the text that I put for when raids happen, so here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna show it after this one Yeah! "Party of seven, I gotta find a table for seven people" and get it, it's like a cafe, get it? Okay, uh, so not everything is ready yet, but everything for today's stream is ready Um... Like, my friends PNG's, they are not ready, they are... Uh, they have yet to be set up, uh, and I, um, what's it? Um... There, there's like a few other alert things I think I need to add, but for now, this is, this is it So, I hope you guys like it, and let me move on to the part of the stream I am excited for I, I think everybody's excited about this, cause I talked about it in my Discord server What about your companions? They're not set up yet, I have to, I have to set them up But yeah, so we're gonna do, we're gonna do a work stream while we, while we hang out here with Chai I might turn off the light Not better, not better for you guys? Hold on Okay, that's better, you can, you can see pretty much the whole tank His name is Chai, because of fucking Kors, and I love him with all of my heart And if anything bad were to ever happen to him, I'd kill everyone in this room and then myself It's not Nemo, his name's Chai! But yeah, you guys can stare at him, so the way the study slash work stream is gonna work This is gonna be my first one, we're gonna see how it goes first Um, pull up some like homework, any work shit you gotta do, anything Uh, and if you guys want, um, feel free to work on shit, so there's gonna be a timer down here We're gonna do the, the, I think it's called the Pomodoro, uh, ti- uh... Time method where you work for 25 minutes, you get like a five minute break And then after three times of working for 25 minutes, you'll get like a 15 minute break, so yeah Uh, it, it's also a game, uh, this is what, this little tiny window right here is, so... Uh, we will be, uh, using this, hold on, did I put water, all of them? Okay, I did, so, uh, whenever y'all want, just feel free to start working Um, is there anything else? But yeah, I'm gonna undiffen on Discord, d- i- if, like, okay, if you guys don't wanna work, that's fine If you guys wanna chat, I'm s- I'm happy to chat while I work, i- it helps me, honestly So, yeah, whatever you guys, whatever you guys wanna do You, you, honestly, you could game for 25 minutes and then come back to chat So what's the specs about the new gamery? Um, okay, so I'm not, I'm not tech savvy with PCs and shit So I let my dad pick out the one I wanted to get, so here, let me... I'm gonna put it up on screen, uh... I hope, I hope it doesn't show up too big Uh, I don't want it to be a jump scare Ah, okay, there we go, yeah, here it is, th- this is it Hi Sam! Yeah, these are the specs, and, uh, tha- uh, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it off screen now There we go, yeah Alright, uh... Alright, well, yeah, I gotta start working, I'm behind on work, but if, like I said, if you guys wanna vibe and chat, feel free to I'm gonna unmute on, on Discord, cause, uh, Hawn and Pingus are in VC Also, let me change the stream music Sorry, Brisket, we're gonna listen to lo-fi Where's that stream playlist? Oh, there it is It's nice and comfy, right? Yeah Okay Yay! I, I'm happy, I'm honestly really scared of pushing this thing Like, I haven't, I haven't done anything like too crazy, at least not yet So, for now, it's just, i- it's just here, it, it's existing Uh, I think the most I've done with this PC is... Um... I booted up VR chat for a bit, but that was it, I don't think I did anything crazy on VR chat though, so... Honestly, I, I was told by, uh, my friend Nolan, um, that it's okay if the PC gets hot, and I, and I was just like... I, I don't know, for some reason, I always think that like, if it, if it's any kind of warm, i- it's bad But he, he said, "Oh no, it's normal", and I'm like, "Oh, okay, then, yeah" Oh yeah, I did play Killing Floor 2, my, um... My boyfriend got it for me for my birthday, or not my birthday, he just got it for me, cause he wanted to play with me, so... I think that's the most I've done with it, the only thing that hasn't changed though is the Wi-Fi So, if stream crashes, it's just a Wi-Fi problem, I'm pretty sure, but yeah Yo, Marmo, you're back! Okay, I'm getting distracted as well, so I'm gonna start the timer, so if, uh, again, to explain very quickly The way this is gonna work is we work for 25 minutes and then we get a five minute break And for every third time we work, we get a 15 minute break, okay? Sound good? And, uh, this is the timer, this, this little window here Okay, alright, I'm gonna start it, and I'm gonna start working, but feel free to chat with me if you guys, um... Okay, yeah, I, I, I will, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on, wait, wait, also, let me turn down my mic, I'm so sorry, okay Hello, we're live Oh, hold on, wait, I, I can't hear you guys, wait Wait, 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 wait Wait Okay, say something
Something
Okay, I can hear you guys now, okay, there
Kept baiting us, cause you were like...
I'm sorry!
And we were like, "Yeah, yeah, aww"
God damn it
What are you doing at the top there, what are you doing?
He's vibing, let him vibe, I already fed him
Why is there like a tiny version of, why is there like a tiny one up there too?
What do you mean?
There's like a ti- there's one like smacking his forehead
You, fella, you got two fish?
Yeah, you got two, one's half though, why is he half?
One Chai and...
He's like smas-
Chai, Chai half!
Chai and ch-
He smooshed!
Oh shit, I almost dropped my fucking drawing tablet
What the hell, Marmo, how'd you fr- how do you think that was a squirrel? What the?
I, I have no idea Also, i- if his tank looks a little dirty, I'm sorry, I'm gonna clean it, uh, tomorrow It like, okay, on, on camera, it looks clean, but, uh, in real life, it, it's a, the water's a little murky, so... Uh, alright Alright I don't know if y'all wanna chat or something, cause I, I gotta do commission work
What he said
Alright, thanks Pyro TF2
I'm in my quesadilla
Pyro TF2
Yeah, Pyro eats a quesadilla
I didn't really look at it and I saw a squirrel swimming out of the corner of my eye, that's not how that works Fella now has a gateway to all the cool gamer shit, yeah, I do! Okay I also, uh, okay, so I do wanna take a picture of my setup eventually, it's, uh, it's decorated I have all my cute shit out and stuff, but, uh, I think I also wanna do a video on the, the whole setup As well, so we'll, we'll see All the Doom Slayer merch, I only have two pieces of, actually no, three I, I have three pieces of Doom merch, it's the Doom Slayer, uh, Figma, and then Nendroid And then I got, uh, what's it, I, I got this flag from, uh, from Pingus
What else?
What's everyone working on, or what is everybody doing right now?
Uh, writing Quesadilla
Yeah, I... It's a nice thing you're working on I'm just working on a commission for someone I, I don't think they want it to be shown, so honestly, it's pretty good that I, I'm not streaming it And well, I mean, i- it's even better, cause you guys can look at Chai! You guys, yeah, you guys can look at Chai all you want, wha- what's more interesting, my art or Chai? That, it's Chai, obviously I mean, look at him, he's adorable I wish I had a clearer camera though, cause he's looking a little blurry He keeps glo- going to like the glare of the, my, my window in the back, and I'm just like, "Man"
I thought you were gonna say he keeps glowing, I was like, "Uh..."
You shouldn't be doing that
He should probably go to a doctor for that, you're probably gonna grind something, okay I should've made food before this stream, fuck I'm gonna go feed my Armored Core 6 Edition and then work on music for my 300 sub special Oh, congrats, 300 subs! Oh, hi Soon! Thanks for lurking! Hungry, I should've made food, I'll probably go, I'll make food during the break, I guess Good thing for me, we just got a shipment of spicy ramen in today
Shipment?
Yeah, my dad ordered some spicy ramen on Amazon Also, uh, I forgot to tell chat, I, I haven't been talking about it recently, cause honestly, I'm not really excited for it But, uh, next week is my birthday, and I'm not gonna be doing a, uh, okay, so like, my streaming days Actually fall on my birthday, but I'm not gonna stream on the day of my birthday I'm gonna stream the day before, however, I do have plans to celebrate my birthday on... What, okay, so, hold on, where's, where's my calendar? Okay, so, my birthday is on September 15th However, we are gonna have a birthday stream on the 13th, and that'll be exciting, because If you are on my Discord server We are gonna be doing a game of Kahoot to see who knows me the best, and the winner will get a custom charm made by me So... Yeah!
Hell yeah
So whoever wins that will, it, it'll be like 50 questions too, so...
God damn
Yeah Gonna be a long ass Kahoot game Oh man, my, my pummy's fucking yelling at me It's like, "Don't you eat!" Like, "You're right, I forgot!" Also, if this stream does well, where we like looking at Chai, and, uh, we like, uh, working and shit together I'll probably do more in the future, if not, Monday will return to being just ASMR or chill games I miss doing ASMR streams, so I'm, I'm hoping to return to that soon Yeah, buddy! You just fucking around in VR, me too, I haven't touched my VR headset in a while Oh, you haven't been on in a bit, uh, I haven't either I mean, I was on when I, when I tested VR chat, but tha- that was all it was. I, I just entered VR chat and I was like, okay, cool. Just like better PC, I can hook up the um, what's it called? The um, VR headset to my, my uh, PC cuz it didn't work last time when I tried to do it on my laptop. And I don't think my laptop is powerful enough, so.
Oh yeah, it should be better this time.
Yeah, hopefully. Either that, or maybe it's a problem with the VR headset, but.
Granted, you'll need the cord cuz the whole airlink thing, you need ethernet.
Oh, you do? Okay, fuck. I'll just ask my dad for the, the cord then. You, you C to C? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, plus the cord's better cuz it keeps it charged.
Oh, yeah.
I need to get a new one, you just mochi chewed mine, you fucking rat.
Tell um, I'll tell my dad after stream. Also, I, I've been gone for a week, but it feel, honestly, it feels like I haven't streamed in forever. But how's everybody? Well, okay, no, I, I have, I streamed last, no, not the other week. But I don't know, being at Comic Con and Evo and shit was like, oh. I, I can't believe I didn't stream for a whole month. That's crazy to think. That those two events took like a month, ma- made me take a month off. That's crazy. I should have a redeem where we can feed Chai once, once per stream. But I already fed him today, so. You guys can't, aren't allowed to tell me, hey, feed him. Do you have the 15 feet uh cable or should? I just saw that, fuck. Outlook calibration's being weird. My tablet is just fucking weird to the half alone. Oh, you know what? Maybe I need to clean the screen. That's why it's being weird.
Pretty fast bear.
Redsy fast boobs. Okay, clean the screen. Now I pray that. Get a nap, yeah. Also, my uh, next month, my one year streaming anniversary is coming up, so I'm thinking about doing a, a longer stream. Then uh, what is it? We'll probably, probably do a bunch of games in the, the Comfy Cafe server, and we'll also um, I don't know. I wanna take like a one hour break cuz I, I honestly, I, I don't have the energy to stream for like six hours straight. So for one hour for the stream, you guys are gonna be staring at Chai.
Yeah, Chai cam.
Best part of the stream.
Yeah, try, try.
Yeah.
It's true though, I mean, look at him, he's so fucking adorable. I'd rather stare at that all day.
Ow.
Good?
Yeah.
My god. I just whole, almost this whole stream, he's been like kissing the surface of the, the uh, what's it called? The, the water.
Yeah.
Bro, I already fed you, I'm not gonna feed you again. This guy, at least he's a hungry bitch.
What is he doing?
He hungy.
Screams. I, I don't wanna jinx it, but it's actually fine right now. You have cereal? What kind? And yes, you will be, you will be judged based on what you say. Better say something good.
True.
If it's not cinnamon toast crunch.
I don't want it.
Exactly.
Oh shit, oh no, fuck, sorry. I fucked up. I was trying to look at uh, or DMs, okay.
Cookie Crisp with Chocky Milk?
Based, based.
Aw, hell no, with Chocky. Well, Chocky Milk though, I kinda just overkill at that point though. Not gonna lie.
I'm not a fan of Cookie Crisp, I'll be honest.
Cookie Crisp is good for the most part, but like Chocky Milk uh.
Uh, kinda overkill?
Yeah. Like if you ate that for, for breakfast, that'd pretty much be you'd be eating dessert for breakfast.
And your, your daily sugar intake, pretty much?
Yup.
Guys' favorite cereal then.
CT Crunch, baby?
Uh, it's my favorite cereal.
And then second being Fruity Pebbles.
I like Fruit Loops and Apple Jacks. If I wanna be fat, I will be fat.
That's so real though. Yeah.
You know, we all have days like that. That's me with buffalo chi, actually not, not buffalo chicken fries anymore. Uh, loaded cheeseburger fries. That shit's good.
Oh yeah.
Hey! Shot it back there.
Five plates of wings from Applebee's with your friends? That sounds like a good time, holy shit.
How many friends?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Actually, yeah, how, how many friends?
Oh, that's not enough. You need two more plates.
Now the question.
Wait, how many, how many wings?
How many wings per plate?
Yeah, I was gonna say, how many do they give out on a plate?
Doing the whole fucking math, math equation now. Oh, everyone got plates.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
No, 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 don't put on Guilty Gear music! That, that's not the type for that! Oh hell, oh hell nah!
It's always a time for it.
That was actually a fucking jump scare. It played Nago's theme, and I was like, wait, we're, I'm working!
Scrolling through fucking, scrolling through game, and then looking at mom, forgot, got a jump scare by Philly Bridge.
Oh, it's break time. Uh, so the first plate was loaded with things, but as you keep getting more, they decrease, all for 12 bucks. Actual price was $17. Oh damn, that's not bad.
Pretty good, yeah, it's pretty good.
Yeah, okay. Well, since we're on break now, I'm going to go make myself some food. You two can go entertain chat, have fun. I'm gonna make myself some spicy ramen, actually after, let me. Boom, okay. Alright, you guys. I don't know, chat, look at, look at Chai.
Alright, chat. You play Bomb Rush Cyberfun?
Oh god. We're gonna start promoting, promoting games we've been playing lately.
It's fun, it's a fun time detective, we should really get it. Shut up! Zip!
So chat, have you heard of a game called The Division 2 from a small indie company you've probably never heard of called Ubisoft?
No! No, none of that.
Ubisoft? What's that?
I hear they also made the, that one, what's his name? Rainbow Six Siege. That game sucks.
Tom Hanks Rainbow Six Siege.
Fuck, thank you, thank you.
Project Zomboid? Good game?
Project Zomboid? Interesting. I've heard of it, but I never actually learned what the fuck that is. Oh, this game.
Now to take the dog out, I shall return. Alright, detective. Now to take the dog out, I shall return. Alright, detective. I'mma BRB as well, give me a sec.
Alright. Welcome back.
Sorry for the wait.
Detective and Juan just stepped out for a bit.
Okay. Nice beering in that.
Fair enough.
We'll zoom the timer to do more work. Okay. Also, we ordered food, so I made spicy ramen, and I'm also getting cheeseburger fries.
Cheeseburger?
Excited for all of this week's streams. I'm very, very excited.
Yeet, I need to re-download Outlast.
Yeah, I might also, oh, hi Nolan, look at the stream. Also, Nolan, look at, look at the stream, it's important.
Trycam.
Yeah, Trycam, it's Trycam day.
This is awesome.
This is a moment in a couple of Felicity streaming. Perhaps one of the moments of all time.
This is channel history here.
Exactly. I might turn on his light now, because now it's starting to get, like, really dark.
Ah, I am fourteen thousand point six, I mean, point two thousand-
Is that too far? Actually, that's fine.
Fourteen thousand two hundred points away from a free chibi sketch. Nice.
How, how many points away are you?
Fourteen thousand point, uh, fourteen-
Holy shit!
Fourteen thousand and two hundred points. Yeet. The person, the mod that literally watches every single stream.
Yeah, actually, out of curiosity, Nolan, but how, how many points do you have?
I have eleven thousand.
Oh, shit!
I don't count my points, that's my problem.
I'm the best mod, and I'm not even an official mod.
What do you mean, you are!
You are, yeah.
Page, on your page, it doesn't say my name.
Wait, I didn't put you on there? Oh shit, my bad.
It's fine, doesn't matter. I am the secret boss.
You have to get the true ending to fight you.
Yup.
I said this in question of the day, but I, I honestly hate. I, okay, so I don't mind a true ending, as long as you don't have to go to, like, ridiculous lengths just to get to it. An example being the stupid fucking Five Nights at Freddy's three. True ending? Cause that, that's so fucking stupid. There's just no, like, rhyme or reason to it. It's just click the wall. Let, let me, let me put in my fucking phone number on the wall. That shit's so dumb.
Ah, hello, I'm back.
Welcome back.
There's a mod for Strive, where, there's a mod for Strive that puts everybody's names through Google Translate. Kai's name-
Oh, I saw that.
Kai's name's City, and his subtext says, "Very professional, God is eternal."
Oh my god!
Johnny, in the past, he knows all the secrets, happy life. The fuck?
That's scary! Something about that is ominous as fuck!
Jacko, Madagascar! Cruel treatment of survivors, it is powerful.
What the fuck?
Oh, Sin! He bought a cake.
He did.
That's his name. He ate it all!
The subtext, "I need advice, I was a wild child." Wait, what?
Was that four?
This one is Sin. He bought, his name is, "He bought a cake," and his subtext, both his subtext says, "I need advice," and the second one is, "I was a chi- a wild child." Nago, the next one. "If you drink blood, you will get sick," and then the second one, "life."
What's Bridget's?
It doesn't, oh, damn it, they're not in the fucking... They're not in the thing, they're not in the preview, you can take it. The Sin one is perfect, he bought a cake.
No, you, you know what, fuck, now I wanna draw that, it's funny. I, I, in my head, I think that Sin probably bought a cake because Kai and Dizzy told him to go get one. But then he, he forgot about that, and he was just like, "Oh, why do I have this cake? I'm just gonna eat it all." And then, then just like, "What the fuck, Sin?"
Fucking Jacko is Madagascar! Dude, I'm fucking crying! The fucking, the fucking subtext, like cruel treatment of survivors, what the fuck?
Sounds like Exor, uh, Jacko.
Okay, yeah. I gotta bookmarking that mod.
That mod's funny as fuck. Realized it's past three minutes, so I could probably just start eating my ramen.
So, Randall, how have you been enjoying Bomb Rush?
Yes. Now that I'm Dennis, now that I'm Dennis, yes.
I-
Don't mention the other one yet, I wanna do the surprise, I wanna stream it later. But I- Set up the multiplayer one, I'm too lazy.
I won't, I won't say what the other one is, but when you sent me that picture, I was in VC in another server, and I yelled the character's name out, and they were like, "What the fuck?"
Good.
Cartoon character reaction.
I had a feeling, to be honest. Nineteen inches of what?
Oh, is it the, the Venom thing?
Yeah.
Oh! I saw that, that shit was funny.
What? Oh, hell nah, Bochi the Switch?
Bochi the Switch?
Tinkaton Plush, bookmark.
I just realized, nobody's posted a picture of Zangief Alt Skin Nine the past few days.
Uh-oh.
Someone post it!
Stream, broken.
Paste.
Please, the, the Zangief Alt Skin Nine. Post a picture of them every day. It's gonna stream for, like- I just, I keep fucking forgetting my, my ramen is ready, hold on, okay. I'm gonna take a break from-
Ramen?
Yes, ramen.
No way.
I'm gonna take a break from drawing to just eat. I think this is like my first meal of the day.
Oh, why is Cammy trending? Bookmark.
It's booty.
This is a win, an absolute fucking win.
Yeah.
Wait, what are you laughing at?
Nolan, how far up to Chainsaw Man are you in the manga?
Uh, I don't really read Chainsaw Man anymore, spoil me all you want.
I'll send this to you.
I love the spicy ramen. I don't usually like spicy stuff, but I can tolerate it. Just laughing at.
We can't say anything, this is Chainsaw Man spoiler.
Oh, wait, yeah, I forgot, I'm gonna check it out, I'm not sure.
To be honest, I only know about what's happening, okay, I read a good amount of Chainsaw Man.
Wait, can I see this?
Oh, yeah, you, you, you know a lot of, a lot of-
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of, yeah.
Read, I read a good amount of it, but I just now like see what everyone talks about on Twitter whenever the new chapter comes out, because they spoil it instantly.
Is it difficult?
Oh, my god. That's funny.
So, what is, the-
I love Tony Hawk.
For, for chat, if, if you don't know, the, the Feli Bridget mod is real for Strive, you guys can download it now. You are required to, if you are my friend and you play Strive.
Yeah, yeah, you have to.
And, and i- if you don't, you're gonna make me cry, a- and nobody wants that.
Well, hold on, that, no, it's gonna-
You're an asshole! Oh shit, the mod got thirty-one downloads, that makes me happy. Fact that, like, someone can turn, glance at it for a moment, and, and just be like, "Holy shit, that's Feli!" Isn't really funny. Cause I, I showed some friends who don't play fighting games, and they, they were like, "What the fuck? I thought that was actually you." But it's just Bridget, made to look like you. And I was like, "No, what do you mean, that, that's me." So, I'm like, a- after the stream, I'm, I'm gonna be taking a break, but I'm kind of in the mood to do this. Do you guys wanna marathon the whole Pootus series? The little Pootus?
Sure.
After Love Live, though.
Oh.
I was, I was wondering where you guys were last night, you guys didn't watch it, I was like, oh-
Feli was knocked out, I figured, so I didn't say.
Yeah. I, I passed the fuck out due to stress, so I was like, ugh. OP Day three, yes! Ah, I was so excited!
Soda?
Bomb no.
I'm really, really excited for Payday three. There's, there's a lot of cool games coming up this month. Mortal Kombat one, Party Animals, Payday three. Well, actually, I'm, I'm getting a lot of cool games this month. I'm also gonna get, like, Elden Ring, and hopefully, if I do get birthday money, I am going to buy the new Chilla's art game, because people told me, "You literally play as me." The whole setup that the character has in that game is pink, and their VTuber is pink, so I'm just like, "Shit, you just play as me, they made a horror game based on me." Excited to play it. Also, I'm in the game again, I think it's called, uh, I added it to my wishlist.
Oh, goddamn, I'm gonna mod this game again, goddamn it.
Parasocial. Have you pre-ordered, or are you gonna get it later? Uh, Payday? Cause if so, I am not, but if there's, like, preorder bonuses, then I'll, I'll definitely get it.
Paygame. Wait, isn't that covered this, this month?
Yeah, I just said that.
Wait, what day?
The twenty-first. Oh shit! Wait, you get to play it three days before la- oh shit, okay, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to pick it up.
Oh, thank god, it's only forty bucks anyways.
I'm, I'm like praying that I have enough birthday money to get that. Well, okay, no, I'm getting Mortal Kombat, thanks to my dad. Wait, it's a hundred dollar?
What is?
The gold edition of Payday three.
Oh my.
Oh, good heavens.
Can I not go that far?
Yeah, no, that's-
It's really tempting. I'd love to, but, no.
Fuck.
Mortal Kombat one, and then Party Animals, I'm sure is gonna be like, what, like twenty, twenty-five?
I'm gifting that to you, so.
Oh, right, thank you, I forgot. So, the only thing I need to buy is Payday, then, and Parasocial, so.
I've got, like, way too much stuff coming out around my birthday. Cause I've got, what's it? I think it's the same for me and Juan, because you're pretty much, our birthdays are in the same week. So, like, but we've got, what, Sonic Three Reloaded? The, the, what's it, not the new fighting game, but the other new Granblue game coming out?
Uh, Re Link, right?
Re Link, yeah. And then I think it's the Uma party game is coming out, which, I don't care. I'm buying that game for, like, everyone I know, if it's under twenty dollars, or if it is twenty dollars.
Oh, so this is, okay, so this is what's included, oh, fuck, those are actually-
Mamosomei party game, yeah. I wanna play horse game, Mario Party with people.
How much should this be, uh, be a, a silver edition, detective? Cause I might, I might just go with, I, I don't know.
Hopefully, I'll actually have a job by the end of two.
Just don't make hurt, I'll be back. Just don't make hurt, I'll be back.
Pay Day 3, Pay Day 3.
Seventy dollars, ah! I'll, I'll invest money, so I can get it, hopefully.
Yeah!
I'll, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm trying to think. I think what I'm gonna do is I'll, I'll wait on Parasocial, cuz it's like, it's eight dollars, I'll, I'll get it another time. I'll, I'll focus getting money for Pay Day 3. Oh, but then, uh, I don't know, cuz some of the money I wanna spend next we- uh, the week, cuz I'm hanging out with a bunch of people next week. So, I'm chopping each other. I don't know, I'll see. I'll see, uh, how much money I'll get. I would really love to get the gold edition though. That, that's a funny way to put it. Yeah, no, that's fair. Actually, hold on, I wanna, I wanna show, um, it's Detective, you know about, um, oh wait, the music stopped, hold on. Do you know about, uh, Payday Feli? So, I, I drew it, where is it? I'm getting the image to show you. Okay, yeah, so I, I already planned out Payday 3 Feli. It, and, uh, I don't know if you remember what her, her funny ribbon in two does, but she, she doesn't need a mask because the, the rib- the ribbon's magical, so. But someone stole it! So, now she's pissed. But yeah. I don't know what, the, the, yeah, I don't know what the lore for three is yet, so I'm gonna wait before I, like, do anything else.
Payday Feli lore goes hard though.
I'm glad you think so. So now, sh- she had to like, I, I, I didn't color it, it's just sketches, but she basically had to change her whole appearance for three, just so she wouldn't get caught as the pink stinker, and she goes by a different name. Funny, just when you put a different ribbon on her, she, she looks like a completely different person. Did you see that Joy is coming back? Yes, I did. Not sure how to feel about it, I've always been neutral about her, so I'm just like, whatever. Ah fuck, I almost spilled my, oh. Legit, I only know two people who actually like, uh, Joy. Oh yeah, me too.
Um, I'm hoping Sangris comes back in Payday 3. They, they confirmed that he still does like crime stuff, just not with the Payday gang, so I am holding on to that bit of hope I have. Cuz I fucking, I played Sangris like all the time.
I feel like there's a good chance, I think the, the one that everybody's saying, and I'm, I'm even saying it, um, uh, I want Jacket back.
I, I feel like Jacket can happen, but like, at the same time.
I don't think so.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of a-
I don't even remember, what happens at the end of Payday 2 with him? I forgot.
Like, true ending?
True, yeah, I don't even remember.
I think they all like, they get a, if you do the, the secret ending, like, where they do the, well, ah, it's not really spoilers, everybody knows what happens, when they go to like the White House and shit, and they get like all the, the fucking gold and all that. They all get like their own happy ending, like the credits for each character say like how they spend their money.
Yeah.
Because they each get like-
I don't remember what they said for Jacket, but I was like, oh shit.
Oh, yeah, I don't remember, I think he like, what is it, he like mov- he like moves back to Florida or something.
Yeah. Jacket doesn't, he doesn't really get a happy ending, more or less, he gets a fucking, like a, like a, oh, I wanna go back.
Back to it, yeah. Back to it, back to the grind.
Oh, Detective says he can check real quick. Yes, please, I, I wanna remember what happened. Honestly, one thing I do wanna do before, uh, Payday 3 comes out, I, I doubt I can do it though, cuz I'm, I'm gonna be busy these next few like, weeks, I, I wanted to get the true ending, I'm surprised I still haven't gotten it yet.
Oh shit dude, I'd, I'd be more than willing to help.
Will it take a long time though, cuz like I said-
It takes like an hour.
Yeah.
It is, it is, it is something you have to prepare for. Like, it is not something that happens quickly.
Like, the, the heist itself takes like an hour.
I thought there was like other stuff you have to do for it.
You have to get the achievements first, but once you have all of that ready, when you lu- like load up the, uh, White House heist, that, that whole heist is like an hour long.
What, wha- 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 what do you mean?
Yeah, Detective, you can help, Detective says he wants to, he wants to-
Let's go, yeah, and if we have more people, it's easier, I, I did it solo, and that took like forever.
Oh, I have a friend who did it solo with mine.
Okay, so you have to get the achievements, which I'm assuming is gonna take a while.
Yeah, cuz it's random achievements.
I forget I-
Yeah, we can help with that.
Okay, duh, man, how long do you think that's gonna take?
It depends on the achievements you get.
It depends on the, yeah, but, isn't there a way to like, if, if they're too difficult, you can like-
You can, you can, you can reset them whenever you want, but if you reset them, it resets all your progress on them.
Yeah.
It is, it is a tedious thing, there are mods that I had to like help out with it. Like, I, I had a mod, okay, what you have to do is, and Juan, did you use the mods to make it like a hundred times easier for yourself?
Hmm, the only mod I, I had, because I think it was before you could do it solo, I needed to have a mod to like, trigger the, uh, like, event from happening, like, so I, that was really the only mod I could think of, to like actually do it solo.
Okay, I used mods to make it super easy, because what they don't tell you is, uh, everything is in like a fucking secret language.
Mm-hmm. You have to translate it.
You have to translate it all, and it's not like, translated the like regular way, it is read right to left. So, you have to, you have to read it all like backwards and translate it.
Also Detective said secret achievement highlighter was a big help.
Oh yeah, yeah.
There's a mod to translate the achievements that you're gonna need, so.
It's good, okay, cool.
I remember, um, when I did the true ending, everyone, everyone's mod to translate all the secret text didn't fucking work when we did it.
Oh.
Everyone's mod, except for one person, but the catch is that this person has like really bad dyslexia, so we had like two of us trying to solve the problem. And it was like, oh, it was, it took us forever, we didn't die though, we got it all done in like first try.
I don't know, maybe it's like, maybe it's cuz I really like the game, but like, I, I don't know, I think it's doable, and like, I, I would actually be like really hyped to like do it again.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be down, i- it just, we're, I don't know if we'll do it for a stream or if we'll do it off-stream, but we could, we could, we could-
Yeah.
Make it a series of streams? Oh yeah, we can do that too.
We could do that, yeah.
E- everybody's just gonna have to be free on like, what, Friday night, cuz Wednesdays is our, Mondays is chill. I think that's my set streaming schedule now.
Or we could help you, like off-stream, we could help you get the achievements, and then you can make like the actual, like, heist, when, like a stream. It takes about an hour anyway.
Actually, yeah, yeah, that's, that's a better idea, I think. Oh, back to work, okay, good thing I just finished eating.
I would have to find out how to get my Payday mobs working again.
Oh yeah.
Juan, look, the frog has a burger!
Hamburger frog. He's not gonna fucking share, look, he's just, he's not even eating it, he's just showing off, what a bitch.
Let me, let me, look, look at him!
What an asshole, fucking dick.
Look at this fucking asshole! There's another one of these characters that'll get like a big ass sandwich, a- and they're not even eating it, so it's like, what the fuck is wrong with you guys? Why are you showing up?
He's just showing off, he's just showing off, he's like, look, I've got a burger and you don't.
Exactly. Plus it's good to have four of us, since some achievements will actually require four burgers. Oh, okay. I hate that frog, he's not sharing with the class. Kill him, no.
No, what, kill him now.
Your honor, kill this man.
Your honor, kill this frog, and give, give us his burger.
Your honor, death penalty.
Oh chai, hello chai.
Okay, my Gay Day 2 crashed! It's such an immature joke, but I love Gay Day 2.
I love Pay Gay 2, we should pay the gays.
Gay Gay 2.
Gay Pay.
Much, oh my god. For how big the game is.
Uh, I'll install it again, cuz I, I did wanna play a little bit of Payday 2 before the third game comes out.
Oh, I got, I got a fucking Tom again, holy shit.
Unrelated, but The Outlast Child is pretty good, I haven't played it in a while, but it's pretty good. I don't think I've ever said that on stream though, so. It actually feels like an Outlast game too, just with friends, and you're screaming your asses off. I can't wait for the loaded cheeseburger fries to get here.
Oh, you got some lucky.
Yeah, my dad wanted to order food, so I had spicy ramen, I'm gonna have loaded cheeseburger fries, and, uh, the boneless wings from Fritality, actually, I was gonna ask you, should we, should we order Fritality again when you come here next week?
Uh, yeah, yeah, that'd be done.
Probably do it on like Saturday or Sunday, right? I think I have the right day, right, yeah.
We could like, we could all do something, and like, I don't know, watch a movie or something.
I don't know, I'm trying to fi- okay, so I think what we were gonna do is, okay, so Friday, we're gonna go get conveyor belt sushi. Go swimming? Uh, wait, conveyor belt sushi, yeah, Friday, right, yeah, conveyor belt sushi, something else, the, well, I mean, we can, I don't know, I feel like we won't be at the conveyor belt sushi place for long. I was gonna say, maybe we could go to like a mall or something, go swimming, and then hang out in the hotel room, I don't know, play fighting games or some shit, I'll bring my snack box. Oh, and then we- No, you cannot have it, and Kyohou can't have it either.
I would like to take a bite out of the snack box.
No.
I'll bring my hitbox, my fight stick, I'll bring a con- two controller. I'll bring my whole, you guys get to choose whatever the fuck you wanna use for my controller.
Stan, are we just gonna leave stuff in his room again?
I mean, sure, if, you're okay with that one?
Yeah, if, that's okay.
I'll bring a whole luggage just full of fighting game shit.
That, that'd be funny, including like the fucking May plushie!
You guys are like rolling in like fucking, like, like, you know those like boxes bands use when they're gonna play somewhere? You guys are just rolling those into my room, the hotel staff is like, what the fuck?
Bring in my May, well, yeah, bring in my fucking luggage, I open that shit up, it's just like two fight sticks. It's two fight sticks and just controllers, that's it. And some cords.
Shut up!
God damn. Alright, okay, okay, that works, okay.
Okay, so, and then Saturday, I think we wanted to go record The Adventures of Bridget, episode three. Or re-record it. And then, I don't know, oh, I was gonna say for dinner on Friday, if you guys wanted to, we could probably just go walk around the, the plaza that your hotel is near. Cuz there's a lot of like food places, and there's a lot of like dessert places, there's a lot of bakeries and shit. So, we, we can all like go split off in different directions, I'm probably gonna go get sushi. In that, or we, we can pick out a restaurant to all eat at, yeah, it's on Friday, Friday night.
Shut the up!
Think of like other places, li- like other food places we could take you, but, uh, none of them are really coming to mind.
Hmm, shit.
Is there, is there a place we didn't get to take them last time?
Not off the top of my head.
I mean, no, I, I don't think we do much there, I was gonna say, let's go to Little Italy, but, eh.
Not much.
I mean, the, the food ga- there's pretty good, but.
That's about it.
And then, then there's the art store, but, other than that, I don't think there's much else, so.
Well, figure it out, usually when we fucking plan shit, it never goes well anyways, it never goes to it, so.
I think the plan for Friday is like quite set though, so.
Yeah, that's like about-
That, that's like the only one, that's actually, I, I think, I, that's-
You guys wanted to, last time we didn't get really a chance to, we just kinda went really quickly, but, um, is it Seaport Village, you guys wanted to go there?
Oh, yes, let's go! Oh, wait, wait, uh, Rendel, uh, Cocoichi, should we bring Juan there? Yeah.
Yeah.
You want curry, Juan?
Yeah, hell yeah.
Okay, cool. Also, if, if you're gonna go to the curry place dressed as Joker, then I'm gonna dress up as Futaba.
Oh, fuck, let's go, alright.
Yes!
I'm gonna, should I, hmm, alright, I'll, I'll bring my Joker cosplay. Am I really gonna be in the Shujin uniform though? Trying to think, man.
I need to buy a new Futaba wig, oh fuck, that's another thing birthday money has to go to, cuz my, mine is all like fucked up, ugh.
I hope this works. If not, then I'm gonna be, uh-oh. Shit.
So, I'm assuming, or, I don't know, actually, if, if we want, we could probably just go to Seaport Village and record the Bridget video there.
True.
Because it'll be a new location too, instead of going back to Belmont Park.
But then, what, isn't the whole idea of like going to Belmont Park because people voted for it?
Fuck, you're right, I completely forgot. But, okay, yeah, that, that's fine.
Nah, fuck them, they, their vote doesn't matter.
I mean, it kinda does.
They forgot by now.
No. It, it's fine, we'll, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Wait, did I just put that in the, fuck! Wait, shit, wait, no, balls, son of a bitch.
I don't know, Huan, is there anything else, like, anything you wanna go back to to eat, like tacos or do you want Fritality again? Which I, I think you already said Fritality, yeah.
I do kinda want tacos again, that was pretty good.
Yeah, we can go. Yeah, up down. We could also probably go to, um, because it, the, I think the original location for that place is in Chilla Vista. We could probably.
We get a trolley and stuff?
Yeah, yeah, and it's, uh, it's right across from the Chilla Vista Mall, so if you want, we can, we can hang out there.
Okay.
Yeah. I hope Isabel will be able to hang out all the days that we're planning to hang out. I think she'll be able to.
Isn't it two days so far?
What?
Or three? Are we going, is it three days or two days?
Three, right? Yeah, I guess one stay longer.
Yeah, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and I fly back on the eighteen, yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. And then, we gotta figure out what to do for Sunday then. Okay, so, okay, Saturday is the day we're filming. So we can probably move tacos in the Chilla Vista Mall to Sunday.
Is that, is that Pyro TF2?
Yeah, Pyro TF2 trying to mod a game right now.
There's like a duality of man, and that is when you hear muffling.
I'll, uh, I'll download all these later.
Do you know the one, the one Yu-Gi-Oh card with the two dark paths, or like the dark path and like the light path?
Mm-hmm.
When you hear muffled speech, the light path is Pyro TF2, the dark path is Kenny South Park.
Hey, I like both, they're both funny.
I need to see, uh, gonna get here, because my dad.
Fuck!
What are you trying to do? Is it the multiplayer mod?
No.
Oh damn, I'm getting a bit sniffly because that fucking ramen.
It's spicy?
It's beating yo ass.
Yeah, it's beating my ass.
In the quote retweets?
Yeah. Stop.
Ah, I have to choose, no.
What the boy do, you mean, that? Oh my god, the, the whole tank just looks blue on the camera now. Holy fuck. It's like heavenly light. The fuck? It doesn't look like that.
Blessed chai.
Hold on.
Maybe something with the focus, huh?
It did a little something, but not a whole lot. Oh shit. My headphone stand. Yeah, it's not, not doing a whole lot, but I mean, A, it's something. At the very least, you guys can see his whole tank now, so. The boy ascending, yeah. Chai fish, chai fish. He is my precious little guy. If I were that fish, I would be eating rocks. What the fuck? No!
Society, they should not let me eat the fish gravel.
Who, who's the person that said that the fucking, the gravel looks like fucking fruity pebbles, was it you, Rendel?
Yeah.
God damn it. And scream it a bit. I'm surprised I haven't been streaming for long, either that, or I might, might stream Animal Crossing.
Don't worry about that. Little, uh, little, 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 uh, complications right now, happening right now, don't worry about it.
Alright.
I have more in-stock items for my shop that, uh, like way more than I thought I had, so. Uh, I'm gonna put those up tomorrow, I think. And then fifteen, the, the fifteenth on my birthday, I'll be doing another, another, uh, merch drop. There's gonna be, uh, here, let's see if I can remember off the top of my head. We're gonna have new merch, so we're gonna have Hi-Fi Rush, um, Madoka merch, Hotline Miami, fuck, there, there's like a few other things I'm trying to remember. Um, Guilty Gear, I think, uh, Skullgirls, uh, Melty Blood, and, uh, this is, I think that's all that co- can come to mind right now. But yeah, there's a lot of merch, uh, coming. Uh, what else? I'm trying to remember. Uh, oh, come on, think, uh, Ho-Ho. Uh, uh, what's it, Bocchi, uh, maybe Miku stu- yeah, there, there's gonna be the Miku chai print, yeah.
Speaking of Miku, did you guys see the new Miku design for the Pokemon collab? The new heart for it?
Yeah, it looks fun, it looks.
So it's awesome.
Your reaction to this information, that's funny.
Then I assume I have to redo it again.
I don't know, I wanna make more merch. I'm trying to make more.
So, plugins.
I haven't, I've, I've only opened up my shop two times this year, that's crazy. Well, well, now it's the third, but it's only for in-stock items, but I think I'm now just gonna leave my shop open whenever there's in-stock, and then whenever pre-orders go up. Uh, there, there'll be like a set amount of time. But yeah, there's gonna be a bunch of new stuff, so I hope you guys are looking forward to it. Uh, what else? Oh, and, uh, uh, what's it, uh, Love Live two. Hopefully, if, if I can get the designs done by my birthday, because I, I have a lot of shit that I need, I need.
Oh, Love Live.
Oh, and, uh, that, that, like, only two pieces of Elden Ring merch. I don't know, we, we have a lot. There, there's a lot, uh, uh, that's gonna, uh, be on the store, so. And then hopefully, a new t-shirt design on my Red Bubble, it'll be the, the silenced transphobe, uh, Bridget shirt.
Yo!
Yeah, I don't know, I'm kinda scared of that design being obnoxious on a shirt. I don't know. So, we'll see. If not, I'll put it on Red Bubble for like other stuff, like posters. I don't know. I'm also gonna con- discontinue some of my MCYT stuff on, on, uh, Red Bubble, because I, I think I still have a lot of that. Yeah, I, I have a few MCYT. It's not a lot, it's just Slimesicle and Air it.
Uh, Slime's not even really MCYT at this point.
Yeah, it's because of Q S M P.
Oh, true.
Oh, I forgot I had the Miku's greenhouse, uh, sticker on here. I should probably, do this art. I think it'd be fun if I already did that one. A lot of fun drawing that one. But yeah, new merch coming soon. Boots here, I'll be right back.
There. Alright, motherfucker, no, it's good.
Uh, chat.
All ready then, chatroom.
Um.
You like jazz?
Trying to think of something funny to do. Uh, okay, 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 uh, Rendel, can you start a poll?
Uh. Hold on.
Make the options, uh.
Hold on, I'm fucking, I'm modding right now, you do it, hold on, one second. My dog grabbed something, hold on.
Oh my god. Chat, I don't know how to start a poll. Um, we're gonna have to wait, probably? So, uh, yeah.
Fuck, dog got a fucking pine cone. We, then I didn't even let him outside, where'd they get a pine cone? Hello?
Hello? We're still here, okay, 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 okay.
Oh, that didn't work.
Rendel.
I'm in the middle of something, fucker.
Oh my god, I don't know how to start a poll.
How do you not know how to start a poll?
Because I don't, uh, you normally start the poll. Okay, nevermind, we can't do it.
You should be fucking, no, it's good.
We, we start, we're starting a poll before.
He doesn't know how to start a poll, I'm.
It's slash poll, it's, it, yeah.
Doesn't matter now, I was gonna post bets to see what's, uh, what side of the screen, or what side of the tank chai would be on.
Wait, that's a good idea! Do it!
Alright, let's pull.
Why isn't it working?
Like, starting, like, when the poll ends, like, what side he's gonna be on?
Yeah, how do I, how do I set the options for this?
No, just type in slash poll and then it'll give you like a pop-up.
Oh, okay. What side will he be on in?
Scallops, dude, scallops.
And, eh, in one minute. Left, right, center.
We have a thing where, because, I don't know, he likes kissing the surface. Okay, let, let's see what the options are, right, left, or center. I'm gonna bet. I'm gonna bet on the right.
Betting on the left. I know you can actually make channel point bets, I just don't know how to do that.
I don't know either, I don't think I, I think you have to be a, a partner in order to do that. Who voted the center? Oh no.
When that timer ends wherever he's in in the tank is, uh, the winning, come on.
We need a tiebreaker. I don't know, it doesn't matter, because we're just gonna see. Oh, come on, chai, stay on that side. No! Don't you dare turn around. No! Bro, he's in the center!
He's in the center.
God damn it! Detective one. God damn it.
Gotta have some extra shit that I can.
Okay, so if I, if I were fucking. My, is it just me or did they, did Feli cut out when they said that?
No. I think that's just you, yeah.
And they say, I'm literally him, I am a fish, fish brain motherfucker. Me too. Felt that immensely.
Uh-huh, okay, we're cooking. We're cooking. Now we're cooking, okay, now if I launch the game again.
Look, I'm salty about that, I wanna do another one. Hold on.
Bruh.
No, or Nolan, you, you, you set it up, I forgot, had pushed rework. Matt, and I need a bottle of water, I'll be right back.
Boom.
Oh, god dang it, I'm not even in the game. Alright, this should work. Fuck!
I must made right and center the same option in the vote.
Didn't work? What? Why isn't it working?
Alright, next poll, new polls up. So, uh, start voting.
Back.
Welcome back.
Uh, I'm gonna vote right.
Oh my god.
Why isn't it working?
This is so fucking annoying.
Detective, did you vote for the center again? Oh, it's about to end. Ah! Wait.
That was the left fella.
Wait, what was?
It's according to the, the word is on the stream.
Fuck!
Yeah.
Damn it.
Wait, no. Don't tell me. Shut up!
Be a good demo man. If I were a bad demo man, I wouldn't be sitting here discussing it with you, now would I? Then he fucking dies.
Fuck! Why you no work?
I don't know if it's because of the amount of time it took to get here. But the fries don't actually taste that good this time.
Oh.
The first.
Oh, that's why it no work, I'm stupid. I I wanna, I should grill my. Hmm, I'm stupid.
Oh, I'm cooking!
Hmm, I'm not cooking. I I'm I'm very angry with myself. God damn it, dude, I'm so stupid. Sweet.
Time to focus on.
Now it should work. Uh, please work, actually, please work. Fuck! What did I do wrong this time?
I'm, it's summer party too. I think I'm gonna end stream in a little bit.
You need one?
I don't know if I'll do another stream like this. It doesn't, it doesn't seem like I did too well, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, I'm sure people, yeah, I'm sure it'll do better sometime, another time.
Yeah.
I only say morning, cuz if it were a good morning, I'd.
It'd be fashion. It's not gonna work, it's not gonna work. Yes! I gaslit it, it worked! Oh, this is weird.
Did it replace like the same character or something?
This is so stupid. He'll see when I stream later.
Alright.
Yeah, we're gonna end stream, let's see. See if we can read if there's anything, uh.
Oh, me see.
Sure hope this works.
Okay, we're probably gonna go read Sona. Oh, wait, it's Sona's birthday! And Twitch anniversary, okay, I'm, I, okay, we're, I'm sending y'all to Sona. Uh, Sona's playing Dynasty Warriors 8.
Man.
Everybody go say happy, uh, happy birthday to.
Oh, Nekkork now.
Oh shit, okay, here you go, detective. Uh, good on you. Ah, wait, 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 hold on, hold on. I gotta set stuff aside. Gaming, alright, so, uh. When we end stream, I want y'all to go say happy birthday to Sona, so, let's see. Where's my outro music? Also, I'm gonna definitely on Discord, so I'll 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 see you guys in like.
Yeah, you guys.
Hi, chat! Hi, chat.
Okay.
Outro music. Yeah, so we'll we'll probably do, okay, here, do, do this. Okay. Copy and paste that. Persona. Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna do a bunch of this for. Their birthday, okay, so. Alright, let me start my outro music. Okay, almost done. Alright, I'm gonna send y'all to Sona, don't forget to, happy birthday, Raid. Alright, I will see you guys. On Wednesday, alright.